I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. This is Monday, April 11th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of March 28th, 2022. Could I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe we have any. Next item, our public input. We'll go first to public input. If you'd like to address the Urbana City Council, please come up to the microphone, state your first and last name for the record, and you'll have five minutes. And the timer is right over there to your right.
All right. Alumex Axarod City of Urbana. Using court filing data, the Champaign-Urbana Democratic Socialists of America has provided rent assistance and eviction avoidance information to every home in both Champaign and Urbana that had a court date pertaining to their eviction. So when I'm talking to you all about the cessation of the eviction diversion program unless the City of Urbana acts by the end of June, this isn't something where it's like, oh, this is a great gotcha. This is something that's very important. Again, the WCIA report on evictions specifically looked at filings starting after October 5th of 2021, noting that there was no major increase in the eviction rate that was being submitted, the evictions filed during that time as compared to pre-pandemic years. The eviction diversion program was one factor for that. Again, it helps landlords and tenants meet together so that they can find out some other way to avoid an eviction, whether it's a payment plan or anything else. I'm not even very much a fan of this program because it's voluntary for the landlord and tenant to meet. If either of them say no, well, guess we have no choice. Let's go forward with the eviction. So please understand that when I'm talking about this, this is something where I'm not happy with the program that exists, but it's something that we can keep in place because the data set shows, at least by WCIA reporting, that it was effective, that we didn't see an increase in the eviction filing rate over the period of time that was investigated. I also want to note that the AFSMI at the Illinois State University, in addition to our campus unions, are going through a lot of strife. In their particular thing, they are preparing to strike. I'm not saying that because I expect necessarily action from the City of Urbana, but there are individuals here who can act to show that they support union workers. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. I would also like to ask that the council consider options in terms of furthering the starts with a D. The mediation services for those who are being evicted. Pandemic withstanding, it's something that should be offered and should be a free service for people who are going through something like that. Obviously, you can't pay for a service like that if you're being evicted or else you would probably be paying your rent, you know? So just wanted to piggyback on that and also say that I appreciate the resolution that is on the agenda today in terms of rent assistance for those impacted by gun violence. I think that's a cool thing. So that's all I had.
Good evening, City Council and fellow residents. My name is Tracy Chong. So last week, I asked Mayor Marlin and City Attorney Dave Wesner to explain why they had determined that for in-person meetings, like what we are having right now, allowing public input both in person and also via Zoom is a violation of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the OMA. The responses given by Mayor Marlin and City Council members are a great example of why our mayor and council will always remain corrupt. I think at this point, it is pretty clear. Mayor Marlin decided that she did not want to provide residents with more accessible means of giving public input. And she lied about it being in violation of the OMA. When pressed, Mayor Marlin or City Attorney David Wesner could not give an explanation why it was in violation. So how did you guys, City Council members, how did you guys respond? Most of you just stayed silent. Thus, you showed your acceptance of the corrupt and dishonest behavior by Mayor Marlin. However, the response of two City Council members, Sharice Hersi and James Quisenberry, pretty much demonstrated how ignorant they are as public officials about relevant statutes or how willing they are to deceive the public in support of Mayor Marlin and to create hurdles for residents to voice their concerns. For Mr. Quisenberry to state that we, having remote public input, might be illegal because you don't have the ability to create a capability that was not anticipated when the OMA was designed. And for Ms. Hersi to piggyback and say that just because the act does not say you can do it, doesn't say you can't do it, does not mean that you can do it. Wow, both of those comments just do not make sense. Do you guys realize how many things that we are doing right here tonight is not explicitly listed as a can-do by the OMA? I guess Mr. Quisenberry is not here right now, but I wanted to ask him. I wanted to say that for him to say that the public is speaking without legal knowledge, that's just really low. And I think it's kind of ironic too, since I asked City Attorney David Wesner to comment on it, but I guess you also just remained silent. Yeah, I guess Mr. Quisenberry is not here tonight, but I would like to ask him. If you thought that it was best to get approval from the Attorney General even way back last July, why didn't you do so? Did the city do so? Did Mayor Marlin do so? Did any of you City Council members do so? If not, why? I guess you don't have to do it right now because residents have taken it upon themselves to ask the Attorney General. And yes, it is not a violation to have both in-person public input and also public input via Zoom. So what are you guys going to do now? And speaking of things that the council has been silent on, I'm just wondering when City Council is going to discuss how former City Clerk Charlie Smythe incorrectly designated me as a recurrent requestor. And because of his incorrect designation, my FOIA requests were delayed by months. So I think this, things like this are things that City Council should discuss in the spirit of openness, honesty, accessibility to the public. So I'm still coming here every week to wait for your comments. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to a proclamation for National Community Development Week. And I would ask our Community Development Services Director Sheila Dodd to come on up to represent, oh, you can sit there, okay, to represent the department. So this is a proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, the City of Urbana's neighborhoods are the foundation for providing a high quality of life for its residents. And whereas, the City of Urbana's Community Development Services Department has demonstrated a dedication to the revitalization of neighborhoods and production of affordable housing. And whereas, the week of April 11th through the 15th, 2022, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Association of Counties and the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships, the Home Program. And whereas, the Community Development Block Grant Program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities like Urbana to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas, the Home Program provides funding to local communities to create safe, decent, and affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. And whereas, over the past five years, our community has received $2.8 million in CDBG funds and $3.9 million in home funding. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th, 15th, 2022 as National Community Development Week in the City of Urbana and encourage all citizens to join and recognize the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program. On behalf of the City of Urbana, thank you, Sheila. Thank you to your entire department for all that you do. Thank you. We'll move on to council input and communications. Council members have any comments? Grace, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Wanted to say thank you to members of the public who came and participated in the ARPA Town Hall last week. I was listening remotely and appreciate the input on that. Encourage people to also do the survey online and send us an email with their input. And I support lots of these great projects and I support evaluating and assessing them, all the community requests equally and fairly. And I was also wondering if at some point on a future staff report or maybe discussion, if we could have an update on the situation with funding for By Black Shambana. Here's maybe something about a marketing event. And if there's an update, we could have about general assistance and pay for services like we had talked about in previous meetings. I also appreciate the information on the Dr. Ellis subdivision from a member of the public. And I think the important piece that I really want to know is how much will it cost to replace the whole sewage system to where it needs to be? And I was wondering if we could put that information available to the public in the minutes or records in the packet? I don't think it looked like it was in the public packet, but it was in ours. And I know there's some other interest in seeing that. And then for hybrid meetings, I do support having hybrid meetings. I think we need a clear answer on that about if it is allowable. Sounds like it likely is, which doesn't mean we have to do it. But I think that if we're not going to offer that, that we need to have a clear answer on why not. It seems like it's more realistic reasons of cost and staff and logistics. But I think that we need to have a clear answer on that and not just saying that it's against OMA and that's why we're not going to do it. I think we need to have a clear answer to the public if we're not going to offer that convenience and take down some of those barriers for them to participate, which again, I am in support of and think that we just need to have a much better explanation for why we're not doing that. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
I just wanted to let folks know that the recording of the listening session from April 5th is now posted and that will also be on the ARPA website hosted by RPC as well as the graphic recording that was made last week by David Michael Moore. So that will also be on the ARPA website as well. We are preparing, staff is preparing to do a report on the Dr. Ellis subdivision issue. There's a, it's a complex situation and tremendous amount of history related to this project. So we want to bring you guys all up to speed on that. And as you know, in the past, you did receive a memo regarding hybrid meetings. I don't believe I ever said it was a violation. I said we didn't know if it was at the time. But it's also a question, as you note, of time of logistics expense and staffing. And you had a memo on that last, was it last summer?
It might have been the previous council, so I can resend that.
Ah, okay.
I've lost track of time.
All right. So there, we did do an analysis on that as well. So at this point, the, oh, and the survey is going to be live through June 14th. So this Thursday is the last day that people can take the ARPA survey.
April 14th.
April 14th. Did I say August? June, whatever, okay. April 14th. And that's the last date that people can take the survey. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. We don't have any. Is James Quisenberry on the call? Parima, can you tell us if James has called in? He has not called in. Okay, then I would ask Mary Alice Wu to present for him.
So on behalf of the Committee at the whole, from last Monday, there are two items on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2022-0402R, sorry, 028R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for race street resurfacing construction and construction engineering services. The second resolution is Resolution number 2022-04030R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community development block grant subrecipient agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission households impacted by gun violence. TBR-A 2022.
Could I have a second, please?
One second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jia. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee, I move approval for Resolution number 2022-04029R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission households impacted by gun violence. TBR-A 2022.
Is there a second? Is that Chandra?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Sheila for getting back to me on that, the question I had last week.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee, I move approval for Resolution number 2022-04031R, resolution adopting Mayor City Council strategic goals for 2022, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes. And that takes care of business from the Committee. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to reports of special committees. Don't believe there is any reports of officers. None tonight. We'll move on to new business. First item is, and these are all community development related, ordinance number 2022-04-011, an ordinance approving a special use permit, which is the medical clinic expansion at 1111 West Kenyon Road, Plan Case Number 2443-SU22. And this will be introduced by Kevin Garcia.
It will be. It is great to see you all in person again. It's been a long time. Before we begin, I wanted to introduce our newest planner. It's Nick Olson. We brought him on board in January?
That sounds right.
That sounds right. He's been fitting right in. So he's going to present this case and we are happy to welcome you aboard, Nick. How's that?
Perfect.
Thanks for the introduction, Kevin. I'm happy to be here. So this is regarding our request by Vital Skin Dermatology to allow the expansion of clinic space at their property at 1111 West Kenyon Road in the B3 General Business Zoning District. Are you all able to see the presentation I've got up? No? Okay, great. In 2020, Vital Skin received a special use permit to operate a dermatology clinic in 6,000 square feet of the 40,000 square foot building at the location. They're now requesting to expand clinic space within the building by up to 7,900 square feet for a total of 13,900 square feet in the building. This expansion would be to accommodate testing facilities and additional clinic space in the building. Per the Urbana zoning ordinance, hospital or clinic use requires a special use permit in the B3 district. And this would be converted from what's currently storage space in the building and would not expand the building footprint or alter the exterior. On March 24th, 2022, the Urbana Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed special use permit, conditional on general conformance with the submitted site plan. Staff concurs with this recommendation. I should also note that staff has received no public input regarding this case. This is a location map of the property. The parcel is about nine and a half acres. It's located on the south side of West Kenyon Road between North Lincoln Avenue and Federal Drive. The north half of the parcel is the site of the existing building and parking facilities. And the southern half of the property is currently undeveloped. The property has been the site of Vital Skin's offices and clinics since 2020. Other nearby uses include Campus Inc. and Peoria Motor Coach to the west, the Holiday Inn and Radisson Hotels to the east, and then One Illinois North Apartments to the south. This is a site plan submitted by the applicant, which allocates the conversion of up to 7,900 square feet of what's currently storage space to future clinic and testing space. The areas highlighted in orange would be the locations potentially undergoing renovation. The two highlighted rooms on the southeast edge of the building, totaling 3,600 square feet, would be the site of the proposed testing facilities. These facilities would be Vital Skin's first priority for any renovations and would be undertaken as soon as possible if granted the special use permit. In addition to the testing facilities, Vital Skin is also requesting permission to potentially use another 4,300 square feet for additional clinic space in the next five years. And this would be in the highlighted areas in the middle of the building, southern half. There's some uncertainty about whether clinic space will ultimately expand to those locations, but they'd like to ask for permission now to save going through the special use permit process again later if their business needs lead them to want to expand to those locations. In the meantime, it's more likely those spaces will be used as continued storage or office space, both of which are permitted by right in the B3 district. Any of the discussed renovations would comply with zoning regulations for the B3 district and would not expand the building footprint or alter the exterior. More parking would eventually be required if all the additional space is converted, but not if they end up just doing the testing facilities. The property currently has more parking than is required by the zoning ordinance. So that provides a bit of a cushion as they convert storage space to other uses. If all 7,900 square feet is eventually converted to a clinic use, 12 additional spaces would be required, at which point they could either add more parking or apply for a variance. So to summarize staff findings, we found that the application meets the requirements for the requested special use permit. The proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at the location due to the proximity to the interstate highway and mass transit, which would be convenient for employees and patients. The addition of testing facilities to the location should also improve services for patients. The proposed use would not be injurious or detrimental to the district or injurious to the general public as it would not negatively affect nearby uses or traffic patterns or generate excessive noise. It would also not require substantially more parking or any additional infrastructure or services. Finally, the proposed use would confirm to the regulation, would conform to the regulations and standards of and preserve the essential character of the B3 zoning district as the footprint and exterior will be unchanged and it would be an expansion of an existing use in the building. So City Council has the following options regarding Plan Case Number, sorry, regarding this ordinance. Council may approve the ordinance or approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions or deny the ordinance. Again, on March 24th, Plan Commission voted five yeses and zero nos to recommend approval of the proposed special use permit with the following condition: the construction of additional clinic or testing space must be in general conformance with the site plan allocating up to 7,900 additional square feet to clinic and testing space. And staff concurs with this recommendation. Thank you, and I can take any questions.
Any technical questions for Nick? Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. I was, I'm trying to understand how you said this doesn't change the footprint of the building, right?
So any renovations changing the footprint of the building would be like additions onto the building. And these renovations would be taking place in what's currently storage space within the building. So they would just be undertaking renovations within the building structures that already exist. They wouldn't be building anything new onto the outside of the building.
And they need a special permit just for the change of use then? For the renovation?
So in 2020, when the initial special use permit was granted, it was conditional on clinic space would be contained to 6,000 square feet of the building. So now that they'd like to expand a clinic use to more of the building, they, according to the zoning ordinance, require an additional special use permit.
And that's what we're referring to, right? The area that's already a building for storage is what we're talking about with this construction of additional clinic of the 7,900 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. And then you say something about future expansion as an option? Or that's just in this already?
Yeah, so my understanding is what they would want to do immediately would be to add testing facilities. At City staff suggestion, we suggested that they request any space they think they might use in the next five years for additional clinic space. So it's honestly, from my conversations with them, it's probably more likely they won't add any additional clinic space beyond the testing facilities. But they would like to have a bit of a cushion if business needs do lead them to want more clinic space within the next five years.
Okay. And so you're saying this 7,900 square feet encompasses all of that in the existing storage that they have the opportunity to use?
Yes, and I think the testing facilities would be 3,600 square feet and then the rest would be the potential hypothetical future clinic space.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? We have a motion for approval.
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2022-04-011, an ordinance approving a special use permit, medical clinics expansion at 1111 West Kenyon Road, Plan Case Number 2443-SU22. For approval.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Welcome, James. That motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2022-04-012, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, PUD meeting requirements. This is Plan Case 2442-T-20. This is Plan Case 2442-T-22. Kevin Garcia will be presenting this one.
Greetings. Excuse me. I don't have a fancy presentation or anything because I think there's a pretty straightforward text amendment that we're requesting, and this would require applicants for planned unit developments that are located near residential areas to hold a neighborhood meeting prior to going to Plan Commission for the public hearing. Now, this would codify a practice that we've been recommending in the Planning Division for at least the past several years, and we found that when applicants take us up on the recommendation and they hold these neighborhood meetings, the outcomes of the planned unit developments tend to be a lot better than they would have been if they would have gone straight to Plan Commission. So we've found it to be very effective these last few years. Now, PUDs are typically our most complicated cases, and this would really help foster a dialogue between the applicants and the neighborhood surrounding the planned unit development, sort of in advance of the formal hearing at Plan Commission, which doesn't really lend itself to the sort of dialogue that we feel is, you know, is really useful in these types of cases. So the basic thing that the amendment would do, this is on, in Ordinance Attachment A, shows what we're proposing here. So the basics are that the applicant would work with the planning staff to identify a location for the meeting, to send notice to nearby property owners and residents to hold the meeting at least a week before the Plan Commission hearing. And then at the meeting, they would provide some basic information, the plans and renderings and other information about the project. They'd also detail any waivers they're requesting, because that's part of the planned unit development process, and any public benefits that the PUD would provide. We also made the option available to hold this type of neighborhood meeting before they even submit their PUD application, because we've had at least one applicant in the past go that route and then decide not to even pursue the application. So that really saved staff time, saved commission time, and saved council time as well. That's the gist of the amendment. The Plan Commission, at Plan Commission, we held two meetings on this. At the first one, I brought the draft language. They made some really good recommendations to make changes to it. And then at the second meeting, they approved it five to zero, or sorry, they recommended approval to council with a vote of five to zero. We've received no public input on this case. So that concludes my report, and I will take any questions.
Chris.
Kevin, where would the meeting, the neighborhood meetings with the developer happen?
Yeah, so I think it would depend on what neighborhood it's in. So every neighborhood has different venues that might be suitable. So it could be, we've had meetings in the past at the library for things in, say, West Urbana. We've had meetings in churches. Really, it's just a location that's, that's, that can be open to the public and that's accessible.
Sharice.
So in the event that, you know, there is a public meeting, I know from previous PUDs that were planned and fell through, one of the issues that I had was that, is having absolutely no knowledge that there was a meeting regarding someplace close to my neighborhood, and how, how, how do we have some kind of guarantee that the, the, the community that will most be affected by a new PUD will be properly, I don't want to say properly, but I want to say better notified of such a thing? Because I just recall talking to a developer, you know, and this was before I was on council, and he said, "Oh yeah, well, we had a meeting at such and such a church." And I asked, "Well, how many people showed up?" He's like, "Oh, there were like 10 people." And yet there were people coming from all over the community complaining about this particular issue and saying that they weren't notified and they didn't know anything about it. So how can we make that process more amenable to the community?
Well, I think that's a great question, and so what this would, what this would require at a minimum is that anybody who lives or, say, has a business within 800 feet, so that's roughly two or two and a half blocks of the planned unit development, would have to be notified by mail. So hopefully that would get to everybody, but we have, you know, we have other methods. You know, in some neighborhoods, we do have folks that are sort of our main contacts for that neighborhood, and they might maintain some electronic communication type of list that we can, that we can send out an invitation through. So, I mean, it kind of, it's impossible to sort of write that into the zoning ordinance, like how exactly we're going to do that, but I think that's why it says that the applicant will have to work with staff to do that. I think we're getting better at our communication all the time, so just reaching out, especially through multiple ways and electronically and whatever else, I mean, posting stuff on our website. Bridget's great at getting the word out in that way. So it's, it's the, you know, whatever methods we think are going to be effective, and then hopefully we'll get a good amount of people at those meetings.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation on this. I was wondering if, I mean, you feel, it seems like you guys obviously think that this is, you know, a good choice in coming with a recommendation, but if you could just explain more about the extra staff time of, you know, staff working with the applicant to do an extra public meetings.
Yeah, well, so like I said, we've been, we've been recommending that applicants do this already for more complex cases, and I view that as sort of one of the fundamental things that the planning staff should be doing is, you know, is trying to sort of foster the communication between, you know, applicants and a neighborhood. So I, I don't think this would lead to additional staff time. In the past, if, if an applicant for a PUD or for other, other things that we may have recommended a neighborhood meeting for, if they, if they don't hold that meeting in advance, it usually takes up extra time at Plan Commission. Usually, those things will get continued at Plan Commission, or often they'll get continued at Plan Commission, so it, it builds in more staff time later on down the line, and it sort of leaves out the effective communication part of it, which is where they're talking to the neighborhood before it sort of gets to the formal process, which I don't think really leads to the best outcomes.
Thank you. And then another question. I don't know if you've heard from or asked any former applicants of going through the PUD process. Just as if you have a sense, I didn't hear it come up in the commission meeting about any possible barriers or disincentives to future PUD contracts if they feel like this is an extra barrier that they have to kind of take on with staff in addition to the process.
I haven't reached out to any, any former applicants. We do have, well, one of our Plan Commissioners has gone through the PUD process, so I think his, you know, having his voice in there was, was useful. He didn't balk at anything that, that we're proposing. And we tried to build this in a way that it's not going to be too onerous on the applicant's side, so it can be done in the same timeline as the normal PUD process. So the way that the timing works out, they already, we already have to be notifying the public 15 days in advance of a Plan Commission meeting. We have to send our, our legal ads into the news gazette before that even, so there's a few week window that they can build this process into. So I think the only added cost for the applicant is going to be, you know, maybe a few hundred dollars for mailings. So I think in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking about, you know, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a project or millions of dollars for a project, a few hundred dollars probably isn't going to deter an applicant.
Thank you. And I had a specific question about, you know, kind of off Sharice's point about notifying, and, you know, I appreciate that you guys had the addresses and property owners thinking about renters in that situation in the commission meeting. I didn't know if, you know, just a thought about being more specific, or if you're trying to intentionally keep it vague with like "send", because they said it could be, you know, like an email that gets spammed, or like, "Well, we put it on a board that nobody sees", and like, do you mean direct mail and flyers, and like, if it's worth considering being a little more specific if you do have a specific intent?
Well, the intent was definitely that it would be mailed to them. So, you know, if you wanted to make a minor adjustment, you could, you know, you could change the word "send" to something like "mail notice" to all addresses and property owners. Yeah, that's, that's definitely the intent, and so if you'd like to make that change, I would, I would have no issue with that. You know, I'm always thinking years down the line because, you know, eventually I won't be in the position that I'm in, so whoever comes after me won't know the intent, you know, won't know that that means you need to mail this stuff. So you could get more specific there.
Yeah, I just think, or whatever we do mean. I know that, you know, like you said, multiple avenues are best, so I don't want to limit it and say, you know, just mail, but if there's a way, if that is what we mean, say, maybe there's a requirement to send, you know, official mail through the postal system, and we encourage other avenues of publicity or something like that. And is there a time urgency on this, that it didn't come to committee first?
No, there's not, and, and I did want to make a point about that. So certain, certain types of cases, we were instructed by, by the previous council to bring cer, a very specific subset of cases directly to committee. I don't have that list with me right now, but it was typically sort of more complex cases. So for things like this, which I consider to be a relatively minor text amendment, we, the typical process is bringing that straight to council. We used to bring everything straight to council, but the, the last council wanted to see more complex things brought to committee first. But there's, there's always the option to, you know, to send things back to committee, or if we got other direction, we could bring them to committee first before, before it come into council.
Any other questions? Mary Alice? Janie Mae?
All right. I am going to move approval of Ordinance Number 2022-04-012, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance for PUD meeting requirements, Plan Case 2442-T-22.
Second?
Jaya? Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
I just want to say how much I appreciate Kevin moving this forward. We've had conversations about this, and for those of you who may remember, we had a group of people come to City Council talking about what their desires were for the neighborhood, and this was part of that, and when I spoke with Kevin, he thought that it would be not a heavy lift to do it, but I will say that you still had to put in a lot of work, go to a lot of meetings. I really appreciate your time on that. Thank you. I think this is the, the right thing to do in terms of spending money. I have heard PUD cases that have failed at City Council that have cost them $100,000 just to get the case to City Council. We can save staff and we can save the applicants money if we can iron out some of the early details before it even gets to the Plan Commission, before it gets to the City Council, and I think this is a really great opportunity to tell, you know, prospective people who are going to be building in our community, you know, "We take this seriously. We take the input of our citizens seriously." PUD cases, for those of you who aren't aware, and it took me a little while to wrap my head around PUD cases, but basically they're granted waivers in exchange for public amenities or for going above and beyond the building code. And one of the things that has come up in, in PUDs in the past has been whether or not the public amenity that was being proposed was really something that the public wanted. And, and I, that would be an example of something that we could absolutely handle in a neighborhood meeting where they could provide feedback on, "Oh, this is a desired item that we would like to see in our neighborhood versus we really don't care." So I do think that this will really help move the process, make it actually, even though we're adding a meeting, I think it'll make all the other meetings go much smoother. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Chris?
Completely agree with Alderman Wu's assessment there. I've been through a, a neighborhood meeting with a developer in Champaign years ago. It was the Latitude Development on University Avenue, and it made a big difference. The developer wanted to do a 500-unit development, and the neighborhood requested and got a reduction to 300 units. So it's very valuable for the developer to get input, adjust his or their, you know, their design to fit what the neighborhood wants, to get more buy-in from the neighborhood, and everybody's happier. So thank you for doing this, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Chandra, and then Jaya.
So I just, I want to clarify if we're going to change the number two from "send" to "mail"? Just, yes?
I'm not sure. I haven't heard that formally suggested.
Okay, so can we amend your motion to make that adjustment?
Sure, we can. I amend my motion to change number two's first word from "send" to "mail".
So that's page four HB2?
Page four H12, 1B2.
1B2.
And I'll still second that.
Okay, so as amended, it would read "mail notice to all addresses and property owners."
I also just wanted to echo that, thanks. I think that aside from this just being a very practical solution, I think it also embodies what many of us talk about, is that we want more of those opportunities for public feedback, and I appreciate this actually being written in to say that we're going to actually, you know, codify our values. So just appreciate the work on this as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and amended and stated. Could we, would the juror please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is Resolution Number 2022-04-032R, a resolution to protest a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance for the data center PV solar array. That's CZZBA Case 030-AT-21, and Marcus Ritchie, our another city planner, will be presenting this one.
Good evening. It's great to be back in front of people. Data center is proposed as a special use in the Ag2 Agriculture, B4 General Business, and I1 Light Industry zoning districts. PV solar array is proposed as a second principal use on a lot with a county board-approved special use permit in the Ag2 Agricultural zoning district, or as a principal use with a county board-approved special use permit in the Ag2 Agriculture and in all business and industrial zoning districts. This is a resolution to protest a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, Case Number CCZBA 030-AT-21. Champaign County zoning administrator John Hall is here and available to answer questions. The city has the right to protest county tax amendments. Under state law, a municipal protest of the proposed amendment would require three-quarters supermajority of affirmative votes for approval of the request at the county board by any one of the municipalities in the county. The Plan Commission heard this case on March 24th and recommends City Council not protest the proposed amendment. Staff agrees with the recommendation because the proposed text amendment would minimize land use incompatibilities and still allow the city to plan and manage development through the county special use permit review process. The county's Environmental Land Use Commission reviewed the Champaign County zoning board of appeals decision at its April 7th meeting and will make a recommendation to the Champaign County Board at its May 5th meeting. The board could hear the case at its May 19th meeting at the earliest. The board could hear the case at its May 19th meeting at the earliest. On the screen is a flow chart created that tried to, I won't say simplify, but help explain how a proposed solar array would be regulated by the county. I produced this, this wasn't produced by the county, so if there's any mistakes, it's on me. A lot of this is already in place in the county's zoning ordinance through its solar farm regulation, which was passed several years ago. Part of this amendment is adding in solar arrays, which are smaller systems, allowing them to be considered as a principal use, or a second principal use, or as an accessory solar array, something that is smaller than the acres-large solar farms that are al- already being regulated. And the reason they are coming forward with this is because they've had an applicant submit or inquire about building a data center with an attached solar array to power the data center. The data centers are not a use that's already listed in the Champaign County zoning ordinance, so they need to add that use to it so they can properly regulate it. Also, they want to be able to properly regulate these smaller solar arrays that are specifically designed to power these principal uses versus the solar arrays they're already regulating that are built to put energy onto the utility grid. So as we follow along, starting at the beginning, you know, they first determine a proposed system. If it is a, a primary use principal solar array for producing energy to the grid, it's regulated under the existing solar farm legislation. If, then they look at as to how it is mounted. If it is mounted on a roof, it then is considered small enough to be exempt from further regulation. If it's ground-mounted, then they look at its size. If it's larger than 1,000 square feet, they would require a screening for it, landscaping. If it's smaller than that, they would not require screening. They also look at size from a solar energy system size, and they draw the line at 1 megawatt, which is roughly three or four acres of solar panels. If it's larger than that, then they say, okay, it's large enough for us to just regulate it as a solar farm anyways. It's not a solar farm, but we're going to treat it as that and require the screening and everything that is required under their existing legislation. But if it's smaller than a mega lot, which can still be three or four acres, they are going to call it the new solar array definition. And then they figure out, okay, this smaller solar array, is it small and going to go on a building or a house? Is it simply a very large solar array, which is considered a principal use solar array by itself on a lot? Or is it perhaps on a lot with something else, like, say, a farm or a business? It's still large enough to be considered a principal use, not an accessory use, but that's the third way that this ordinance would allow a 1 megawatt or smaller solar array. So that's the process in a nutshell. I know it's complex, and so that's why we're here to answer questions, and why Mr. Hall is here to answer questions. Moving back into the staff report, down into the discussion in county zoning, you know, the intents of the county's Ag2 business and industrial districts are defined in the zoning sheets that were included. However, the finding of fact explains how data centers and solar arrays do align with the county's long-range management plan goals. For example, PV solar arrays do not require the permanent conversion of farmland. Solar arrays can be removed at the owner's choosing, and the land can be put back into agricultural production. Moving into city zoning, city staff reviewed the proposed text amendment to identify potential land use conflicts within the city and ETJ, and finds that it would minimize land use incompatibilities and still allow the city to plan and manage development through the county's special use permit review process. The city itself does not list data centers or PV solar arrays as principal uses in our table, 5-1 table of uses. Planning staff are working on a zoning text amendment to add PV solar arrays as a principal use and to allow accessory PV solar arrays as accessory structures. Currently, the city permits data centers in many more zoning districts with lower levels of permitting and review-specific conditions than the county's proposed amendment would allow, meaning the county would be taking a harsher, stricter review process on them than the city is currently. The zoning, and also similarly, the city permits large-scale PV solar arrays in more zoning districts with lower levels of permitting and fewer conditions than the county's proposed amendment would allow. This would hopefully change after our own zoning text amendment. The staff report gives a handy table showing where the county and the city currently permit data centers and solar arrays. Overall, finally, the city already allows small-scale PV solar arrays in all zoning districts and treats them similarly to how the county currently treats them. This would not change significantly under the proposed amendment. These are, you know, the roof-mounted or ground-mounted solar arrays that you find in your neighborhoods, or next to businesses, or at farms. The staff report details how the upcoming city solar text amendment would include similar language as the county has proposed in their text amendment. PV solar arrays mounted on roofs would be exempt from regulation. PV solar arrays primarily intended to generate electricity for sale would be a principal use and would be treated as a PV solar farm, requiring more stricter view. This is already in place at the county level. PV solar arrays primarily intended to power a specific use would be treated as an accessory structure, requiring less strict review. And small-scale PV solar arrays, including small accessory structure, solar arrays would likely be exempt from landscaping and screening requirements. As mentioned earlier, the Urbana Plan Commission discussed the proposed text amendment at its March 24th meeting. The primary discussion items included how the Illinois Pollution Control Board regulates noise, and the dissimilarity between data centers and electrical substations, which is currently how we have in two past cases treated a principal use solar array and a data center. The most similar use in our table of uses is an electrical substation. Members agreed that the proposed amendment looks good, and that the city should not protest the proposed amendment. The city should then finish and pass its zoning, solar zoning text amendment, and then pass a data center zoning text amendment so that it can regulate both uses as it deems necessary. We have received no public input for this case. As far as implications for development within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, in addition to the opportunity to protest the amendment itself, the city has the continued authority to review and comment on any proposed special use permits in its extraterritorial jurisdiction, including those for any future data centers or solar arrays. If, finally, if a data center or PV solar array were permitted under the proposed amendment, it must still comply with the county's detailed, specific conditions in the amendment, including fire protection district approval, security features, noise minimization design, minimum yards, and noise levels. With all this in place, staff believes that the proposed amendment would still allow the city to plan and manage development through the county's special use permit review process. As far as the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan, the proposed county's zoning ordinance text amendment is generally consistent with these city goals and objectives, especially encouraging a variety of land uses while minimizing the effects of potentially incompatible land uses through design controls. Staff findings are summarized in the staff report. I wanted to hit a couple other exhibits. So this is mapping out where things would be permitted. Proposed data center district, proposed data centers would be permitted in the Ag2 zoning districts, which is green, in the B4 general business districts, which are blue, and the I-1 industrial districts, which are gray. The blue is kind of along Cunningham Avenue. The gray is up around the city's north industrial areas, and the green is all the farmland around the county. Looking at Exhibit D, this is where PV solar arrays, principal use solar arrays would be permitted. And this is with, let me back up a bit. For the data centers, they would be permitted in the Ag2 districts, in the B4 and I-1, sorry, let me back up. Scratch on that. Data centers are a special use in the Ag2, B4, and I-1 light industry zoning districts. So in any of these districts, it would require a special use permit approved by the county board. They would all come to the city for review and comment. And same thing with the proposed PV solar arrays in the Ag2, the business districts, all of the business, county business districts, and both of the industrial districts. These would be where it would be permitted with a county board-approved special use permit. And this is the table that was found in the staff report comparing the county and city current zoning regulations. City council has the following options in Case 030-AT-21. Not to protest, or not to protest contingent upon specific provisions to be identified, or to protest the proposed amendment. At its March 24th meeting, the plan commission voted for ayes to one nay to forward this case to city council with a recommendation not to protest the amendment. Staff concur with this recommendation. And I'm here to answer any questions, and as is Mr. Hall.
Before we start questions, I just want to clarify for, for the public that this is a proposed text amendment to the county zoning ordinance, not the city ordinance. And the applicant interested in the data processing center is interested in doing that in the county. And the reason it comes to the city is because this could be occurring within our one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is the closest that you can get to the city limits. So whenever that happens, and the county has a situation like this, they do come to the city, and we have an opportunity to consider it as protesting the resolution. So that's why they're here tonight, but this currently is not in the city limits, but very, it could be very close to it. Okay, Mary Alice.
Sorry about that. So, thank you. That's a lot of information to learn and to present. One of the things that you said towards the end, I think, is, is something that perhaps when you give us an update to data centers and solar arrays and text amendments, just go through those four, rooftop, accessory, like, that, that made a lot more sense to me. My, my only question is, it looked like there was one nay on the plan commission, Ms. McFarland, and I only read the minutes, I didn't watch the meeting. I couldn't find any comments that she made in terms of why she voted against this. Do you have any inclination?
She did not make any comments that night about why she voted no.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. I, I followed up with Ms. McFarland, and I think she was, she may have been a bit confused by one of the other commissioners' statements. So I, I don't think she would have voted no if, if that had been explained a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. Grace.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What have you done?
Grace, and then Chris.
Okay, yeah. Sure.
Surprisingly happens a lot, here confusing Chris and Grace. I had two quick questions. One was, what is the current allowance for data centers in the county? Are they allowed in any zoning areas currently?
I believe not, but I will let Mr. Hall confirm that.
Okay. And other question was, if this goes through, and then when there is actually, you know, a data center in application process for construction, you said it comes to the city, and it sounds like in the commission meeting, you guys verified that it would go to the plan commission if it's in the extraterritorial jurisdiction? And then question after goes through them, and then council, do we actually have a say yes or no, or does it just push them to a supermajority like the protest?
That's a very good question, and one I might defer to Mr. Garcia. We talk about the review and comment process, and I believe that simply it is reviewed by plan commission, and then comments from plan commission go to the county board without any vote, but I haven't ever had this come up.
I, I'm not sure if it's come up in my time here. Excuse me. But it's, it's, and I can look in our zoning ordinance here in a second. But, yeah, the, the city has the ability to provide comments on, on county special use permits, but there is no, there's no formal, it would not require a supermajority. But it's my understanding that, and, and I think Mr. Hall probably has more experience with this, is that the county takes comments in cases like that pretty seriously. They don't just say, well, oh, the city doesn't want us to do this special use permit, but we're just going to do it anyway. But I think I'll defer to him as well.
Mr. Hall, did you want to comment?
Well, there, there are no protest rights in special use cases. The zoning board does its best to honor municipal requests. Some municipalities don't even deal with special use cases because they don't have a protest right, they feel it's not worth their time. I know the zoning board does the best it can to honor any municipal requests. Many years ago, we did the Curtis Orchard special use permit outside of Champaign. Champaign provided comments, the zoning board pretty much adopted them, and Curtis Orchard is a great success. So no protest rights, but we always want comments.
While you're up there, could you answer the question about the current zoning allowances in the county for data centers?
My position is, we don't allow them. That's why we're amending the ordinance.
Chris.
Thank you. What's a data center?
Oh, okay. In short, a data center is a collection of computer data servers, like maybe giant tower units, like the CPU maybe sitting underneath your desk there, primarily designed to crunch a lot of data, no monitors or mice or other peripherals attached to it. Racks and racks and racks of them, either inside a building, or inside sometimes something that looks like a shipping container. You might even mistake it for a large inverter system for a large solar farm. They use a lot of electricity, they get really hot. Each of the units has its own, you know, set of fans to keep it cool. And, you know, it's one of those things where its use is guided by the market. It's, this is the current, one of the current hot things is providing, providing data storage. Now, it could be a data center for storing data from people storing photos and documents on the cloud, or it could be a data center crunching numbers for Big Blue there at the NCSA on campus. One of the current things is data centers for Bitcoin mining, which is cryptocurrency stuff. And none of that is part of the zoning text amendment. It's about the machinery, and about its presence on the landscape, and its impacts on the environment and people around it. So they try and regulate that with buffered instances and screening like wind towers or solar farms.
Any other questions? Grace.
What are benefits of having a data center in the county in these zones? Especially when I heard, you know, employing one person, and this could like-
Grace.
What are benefits of having a data center in the county in these zones? Especially when I heard, you know, employing one person, and this could likely be data for a private company that's not connected with the city? So I'm just wondering, what's the motivation or benefits of this?
You'd have to ask Mr. Hall that. I think if you asked me about that when it comes into the city, I would say it is an additional land use, and we strive in our comprehensive plan for a diversity of land uses to expand our revenue stream, to balance industry versus commercial, versus white-collar versus blue-collar. So the more different kinds of land uses that we have while minimizing the incompatibilities between those land uses is important.
Chandra. Okay.
I move approval of Resolution Number 2022-04-032R, a resolution to protest a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, data center PV solar array, CCZBA-030-AT-21.
Mary Alice?
So, Chandra, do you intend to basically tell county that we want to, we're going to protest?
Well, if we can get a second, we'll clarify what a yes and no vote means.
Okay, then we're going to be voting no on that one, so I'll second.
Okay.
Because the amendment, the resolution says that we are protesting it.
Not to protest.
Right, so if we're not protesting, we have to vote no.
As stated, it's a resolution to protest. So, a no vote means that you're defeating the resolution of protest, which would then mean that cases would require a simple majority vote at the county board. If you vote yes on the resolution as stated, that means you're protesting, you'll be protesting the text amendment, and it will require the supermajority vote. So, a no is a, is a, to defeat the resolution of protest, yes is to support it.
Mayor, I, I thought we, last time, and the, the way that we're trying to present this now is, is to be more clear and to say, so you could make a motion not to protest. We don't have to go through the sort of, like, jumping through hoops anymore.
That was fine, but it's written.
It's written here, it's written.
Resolutions are always written to protest. That's why in our presentation, we try and help with, let's see if we can.
I, I agree, that's how we had hoped to do it, but as it's written here, the votes have to, unless...
Can we not simply vote not to protest? Do we have to?
I feel like we've had this conversation plenty of times before, and the ruling was that if we vote to not not protest, it doesn't mathematically mean protest, so we need to just vote on protest, yes or no.
Would you care to reword your motion then, Chandra?
If, if we re, okay, I think it's...
Could I, could I say something? I, I think the other option is for us to not take any action.
I have a discussion, and I do plan to vote to protest, so I feel like if it's to not not protest, doesn't really imply to protest. So I think it is simpler to just keep it a protest vote, yes or no, as we have in the past.
I think as written, people understand. We'll try to rewrite it different the next time around, but, but since it's in the packet, it's in the agenda, and it has a motion on the floor. So again, if you vote no, you support the resolution of protest, and therefore it will require a simple majority vote at the county board. If you vote yes...
No, it's the reverse.
Jesus. If you vote yes, you're protesting.
Correct.
Correct. If you vote no...
No, we're not protesting.
Right. Are we ready to vote?
Grace.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a lot of, a lot of thoughts on this. I am in favor of protest. I mean, reading it here, Ag 2 Zone is agricultural district intended to prevent scattered indiscriminate urban development and preserve the agricultural nature within the areas. I just don't see how a data center fits that at all. There's other ones too in here, I mean, just everything from the county and our city comprehensive plan just seems like it is not in favor of this, and I'm really confused on how it's justified in here. Like, County Policy 4.1.1, it says, "Commercial agriculture is the highest and best use of land in those agricultural areas," and that the county will not accommodate other land uses except under very restricted conditions or in areas of less productive soils. This just doesn't seem like a data center is any better off using our prime farmland versus any other zone. And somehow, that's all justified under, well, they have a solar array, so now the agricultural land use is just kind of irrelevant, which doesn't make any sense to me. And then also, our Urbana Comprehensive Plan, 16.2, our objective is to preserve agricultural lands and environmentally sensitive areas outside the growth of the city, talks about not having incompatible interfaces such as industrial and near-residential. I think data center near agriculture, for me, is definitely an incompatible use. And I feel like because there's the PV system in here, it's kind of overshadowing the data center, and that's really the change here. Seems like the, the solar arrays are already allowed. The data center allowances is the really big change. I'm open to them in the other zones, the B3 and the I2, or the other zones, but I think the Ag 2 Zone seems like a very inappropriate place for allowing the data centers, and just seems contradictory to the policies and the plans that I see in the county and the city plans. It would also only employ one person, I just don't see the benefits. And, yeah, I think that was most of my notes, but I mean, there's much more highlighted in here that, like I said, I just feel like pretty much everything that's justified in here, I read as a reason to protest. And I also wanted to remind us, too, that this is not really our decision, and that voting to protest just pushes the need for a supermajority. So I would also encourage you to consider that. Also, the way I see it is just that this is kind of a big decision, and if the county board is so sure about it, then it's just asking for them to have a supermajority to proceed with this decision, since it's not really ours to make to say yes or no. So I'm definitely planning on voting yes for protesting the change.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
Well, James is on the phone call, and he knows more about data centers than I think any of us up here. I, I will say this, a data center needs connectivity. So a data center is going to need to be able to connect to the internet, basically. And I can understand the concern about agriculture, but it's not going to be just randomly plopped in the middle of a field, right? It's going to be closer to the city because it needs to be able to connect. So, I mean, there's a lot of agriculture out there, I think this is a prime example when a special use purpose would be needed, because then you can talk about the proximity to certain things, and whether or not it's relevant in that area. So I, I don't see an issue with declaring that we should protest this, in my personal opinion, just based on the needs of data centers and the fact that they'll be requiring a special use permit.
Comments? A yes vote is a resolution, supports the resolution to protest, a no vote does not. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizenmary?
No.
That motion carries five to two. The noes have it. Okay, that concludes the items under new business. The last item on the agenda is a closed session. We will be going upstairs to the executive conference room to have that. It's for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining issues pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C2. So I will need a motion to go into closed session. And just a note for the public, we'll adjourn immediately after coming out of closed session, and no more business will be conducted.
Move to go into closed session. To discuss, sorry. I got to say the whole thing. Collective bargaining issues pursuant to five, five ILCS 120/2C2.
Okay, is there a second? Could we have, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we will need a motion to come out of closed session.
Move to come out of closed session.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. With no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.